Your own mic, they can hear you. Okay, I'm getting ready. Good afternoon and welcome to the November 17th, 2021 Regular Board Meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I am Dr. Arthur Riddick, the 2021 Chair of the Board. I am joined this afternoon by Commissioner Jack Owens, Vice Chair, Commissioner Linda Hoffler, Commissioner Ray Felton, Ray Freeman, excuse me, Ray Freeman, I talked to Ray this morning, County Manager Tim Wilson, County Attorney Philip Godwin, and Clerk to the Board Jolitha Chestnut. I now ask Reverend William Norman, Pastor of Zion Tapanaco Baptist Church in Corr Pete, North Carolina, to lead us in the prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Let us stand.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you, Lord God, for just allowing us to meet here tonight. We thank you, Lord God, that you still work in the affairs of men. And we thank you, Lord, for these men and women who have gathered themselves tonight, oh God, to transact business for the citizens of Gates County. We ask that you would give them wisdom, oh God, as they carry out their duties tonight. We ask, oh God, that everything that we do, that we would honor you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Now I call on the County Attorney, your Honorable Philip Godwin.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Citizens and guests, Madam Chairman and Board members, as County Attorney, I have been requested to research the procedure for fulfilling the Board of Commissioners vacancy. Due to the resignation of County Commissioner Jonathan Jones from the Ure District, there is a vacancy on the Board for his seat. The Board, after conferring with myself, legal counsel, and obtaining an opinion from the North Carolina Board of Elections, is required to follow proper procedure to fill the vacancy created by Commissioner Jones' resignation as a Ure District Commissioner. In doing so, the Board of Commissioners is required to follow North Carolina general statutes, specifically NCGS 153A-27, read in conjunction with NCGS 163-10. The Gates County Board of Commissioners has followed the statutory procedure and duly consulted with the Executive Committee of the appropriate political party, which in this case is the Democratic Party. Since Commissioner Jones was the nominee of the Democratic Party when he was elected as the Democratic nominee in 2018, the North Carolina statutes require that to be elected for the vacancy, that the Board of Commissioners shall consult with the Executive Committee of the appropriate party, in this case, the Democratic Party, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation. The Board has consulted with the appropriate party, and they have submitted to the Board the name of Mr. Jonathan T. Craddock from the Ure District and a registered Democrat. At this time, I would personally like to thank Commissioner Jones for his service to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. It is therefore time for the Board to entertain a motion to approve or not approve the name of Jonathan Craddock to fill the unexpired term and vacancy created by Jonathan Jones to represent the Ure District for the unexpired term of the vacating Commissioner. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a motion that Jonathan Craddock be appointed to fill the vacant position created by the resignation of Jonathan Jones for the Board of Commissioners to fill the unexpired term?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. By further way of confirmation, the Gates County Board of Commissioners now hereby propose the following resolution accepting the recommendation of the approved party in name of Jonathan Craddock to fulfill the unexpired term of the vacancy created by the resignation of Commissioner Jonathan Jones. Whereas NCGS 153A-27, read in conjunction with NCGS 163-10, requires the Board of County Commissioners in each county to appoint a qualified person to fill a vacancy on the Board if a vacancy occurs, and whereas Board Member Jonathan Jones representing the Ure District and a nominee of the Democratic Party was elected in 2018 and has resigned from the Board effective October 11th, 2021, at 11:59 PM, and whereas the remaining Board of County Commissioners has consulted with the County Executive Committee of the appropriate political party, and whereas the Executive Committee has duly nominated and voted and presented to person of Jonathan T. Craddock, a citizen of Gates County from the Ure District, as the fit and suitable person to fill the vacancy for the unexpired term of the vacating Commissioner. Now therefore, be it resolved that effective November 17th, 2021, the Board of Commissioners approves the appointment of Jonathan T. Craddock to immediately be sworn in as the Ure District Commissioner for Gates County. Now I would like to call Mr. Jonathan Craddock to be sworn in as he has been selected and unanimously voted upon by the Board of Commissioners to fulfill the term of former Commissioner Jonathan Jones to represent the Ure District fulfilling the unexpired term. Providing the oath would be clerk to the Board who is duly authorized to present or to present the oath that the Superior Court Clerk was unavailable.
I have a motion to approve the resignation.
So moved.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Craddock, will you come forward? Bring your family if you so choose.
I mean, you'd raise your right hand, left hand in the back. I, Jonathan T. Craddock.
I, Jonathan T. Craddock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Gates County Commissioner.
As Gates County Commissioner.
And that I will not allow.
And that I will not allow.
My actions to be influenced.
My actions to be influenced.
By personal.
By personal.
Or political friendships.
Or political friendships.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
So let me go.
Mr. Craddock, welcome into the table. And also, Mr. Craddock, on behalf of Commissioners, as Chair, I present you with your pen, Gates County, North Carolina Commissioner. I would like to say that since this is Mr. Commissioner Craddock's first meeting, he has a packet that mirrors the one that we have here, but he is not expected to know what's in that packet. You're not expected to know what to vote on, but we thought it appropriate that you have a packet as a Commissioner to see how the proceedings for this meeting go. And by the time we meet again on December 15th, you'll be up to speed. Welcome again. Now I need a motion for approval or amendment of the agenda.
I make the motion.
I second.
And properly moved in second, did we approve the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And we ask for a motion to approve or amend the consent agenda?
So moved.
I second the motion.
Properly moved in second, did we approve the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Introduction of new county employee Daphne B. Walker, Finance Accounting Specialist.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome, Commissioner Craddock. This is our new finance specialist, Daphne Walker. Daphne has been an employee with the county for fourteen and a half years as a customer service rep within the Water Department. In May 2020, she graduated from Strayer University with a bachelor's degree in Business Administration and a minor in Finance. For the past year, Daphne has been assisting us in the Finance Department with various duties, as well as still performing her duties in the Water Department. She is a resident of Gates County and has three children and four grandchildren. She enjoys spending time with friends and family, and now the Finance Department. It can be said she is a hardworking, dedicated employee who believes in getting the job done, and we are very excited to have her on our team. And I would like to thank the Board again for approving us an additional position in the Finance Department.
You have something to say, Ms. Walker?
No, I just, I just want to say, you know, I just thank you for being able to have this opportunity. Like I said, like Kevin said, I've been here for fourteen and a half years, and I've learned a lot of the ins and outs of the Water Department, so it's just happening to step up in faith and take that new chapter in my life.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to say one thing in respect to her working and taking the time to work in Finance Department before she ever got there to help us with the budget and with finance, because we were, we were short. And all the Commissioners are very much aware of that, and we were worried the fact that she went over there and did that. So thank you.
Thank you again. Madam Clerk, do we have citizen comments?
Yes, ma'am. I have the name that I have to read, and all of the, all of the names have to the individuals. Would you come to the podium?
Okay, before you start, I'm gonna do some housekeeping in case someone's here that don't know how this works. You may come to the podium, you state your name and your address. You'll have five minutes. There's a clock. Warren, change it to five, please. There's a clock right there on the screen so you can see, and we'll be monitoring that. And your comments must be made to the Board of Commissioners. Okay? And so, one at a time, once the board clerk calls your name, then you'll come up.
This is from Cal Truman, and it reads, "As it has been announced that the county's personnel policy may be changed, I am concerned about the prohibition of county employees running for the office of Commissioner. I can only think of one reason why this may be a good thing, and I can think of dozens of reasons why it probably a bad thing. Dozens of people in the county have similar concerns. If the county intends to prohibit their employees from running for the office of Commissioner, I will request that you make clear all the reasons why this is a good thing. Thank you, Cal Truman."
Next person is Ms. Emma Truman. Will you come to the podium?
Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, Clerk, and all others. I'm gonna be reading a prepared statement, because I wanted to be sure to get as much as I could in my five minutes, so. I believe in transparency and accountability. For that reason, I'll begin with an introduction. For those of you that I do not know, or that I haven't seen in the wild, my name is Emma Truman, and I am currently collecting signatures via petition to run for the Gates County Board of Commissioners in the Gatesville District. While I will be officially filing in December, when filing opens, tonight I am here as a county employee and as a citizen, and I assume that I will be received as such. Before I begin, I would like to congratulate Commissioner Craddock on your appointment and acknowledge that as I address the Commissioners in this prepared statement, it is noted that you are not to be held accountable for their flawed decisions to date. I can only hope that moving forward, you will be a much-needed voice for the citizens in which you represent. So, with that being said, there are several, there are several things that I would like to bring up tonight. So as to not waste any more time, here we go. First, as a citizen and employee, I want to state that myself and many others look forward to the evaluation of the County Manager that was to be done at six months after his hire date, with his start date as May 3rd, 2021. We are now two weeks beyond that date as of this evening. When can we expect that evaluation to be completed? Rumor has it that it's been decided it's not necessary. I'm curious, as are many others, as to why that is. And if it is annually and I'm mistaken, please reference where that information can be found. Secondly, speaking of the County Manager, and I say this with no disrespect to him, but there was a significant pay difference in his favor between that of our former County Manager, Mrs. Natalie Roundtree, and our current one being Mr. Timothy Wilson. Allow me to stray for just a moment to say, Mr. Wilson, as a county employee, I am pleased to finally, after six months and after many have requested an effort be made by you to meet your employees, getting to make your acquaintance here this evening. But I digress. Moving along to more important issues. From the words of Chairwoman Riddick, the salary amount for Mr. Wilson, our County Manager, was decided upon based on the amount recommended in the MAPS group study. Since that recommendation was a factor in deciding the salary of our County Manager, one can only assume that you would find that the salaries they recommended were reasonable recommendations. With that being said, could it also be assumed that the county employees' salaries should reflect and correspond with the recommendations of that MAPS study? When can the county employees expect to see this change? Moving on, $600,000. I am sure I don't need to elaborate, but I will. $600,000 for 145 acres of property to possibly develop in the future, when we can't even get a business to come next to China King. Do you Commissioners truly believe that you will have success in building up that area? If there was true promise, then why, after years, has that land not already been developed? I have to wonder what the land is truly valued at, because I can guarantee you that even with the current elevation in appraisals, that it isn't close to what's being suggested we pay. If you plan to go forward with this, I expect there will be a fully developed plan and projections to show the return on the investment. And that this plan will be prepared by someone that specializes in this area, someone that understands a rural community and can accurately report this. I'm sorry if I don't have faith of those on the Board to make this plan, but given that these are the same people that opted to spend over $13,000 on a table, my confidence is lacking. Lastly, I just want to say, I'm having a very hard time understanding how someone that was elected by the people and supposedly for the people can be acting so deceptively and against the good of the citizens and the county employees. You were chosen to represent the people of this community. I'm sorry I'm emotional, but I love this community. So I'm gonna start that line again. You were chosen to represent the people of this community, and you have failed, and you are failing. You're failing to even listen to them, and I can speak from experience because I sent multiple emails and haven't had a response. So, a simple task such as responding to an email is apparently too much of an effort from our elected officials. If I may, for just one moment, segue to your effectiveness, and I'm gonna speed up, when it comes to your role as employer to county employees and responsibility to their needs. Unfortunately, because of you on the Board, county employees often feel they cannot speak up freely to share their opinions, concerns, needs, requests, or to ask questions without their jobs being threatened or at risk. This county employee is tired of being silenced, and so are many others. If you can't come to, if we can't come to you or to our newly-appointed Human Resources Officer, without having to worry about dismissal, retaliation, and/or, and this is a big one, confidentiality, then who are we supposed to go to? Thank you.
What the next one?
Next is Mr. Thomas Hill.
My name is Thomas Hill. I reside at 87 Paint Horse Lane, Gates, North Carolina. Madam Chair, good evening. How you doing today? Very good. I would like your, I would like to have your permission to ask the Counselor two questions, but before I do, I want to give a synopsis on where we came from. In 2016, Gates County very much overwhelmingly voted against a tax hike. The County Commissioners got together and overrode that. So if you're gonna override the people to begin with, why even ask for a vote? It seems that practices of times old are still going on, given the circumstances of the last citizens' comment. Mr. Owens, I look forward to seeing your election on, on November and how it goes. I won't be voting for you. With that said, to my own Commissioner in Gates, I look forward to working with you, and I look forward to another cup of coffee. There's much to discuss. And if I may, Madam Chair, my two questions to the Counselor.
The question?
Yes, ma'am. Counselor, how you doing tonight? Very good. My only two questions is, is one, do you acknowledge that I came to your office with a Republican recommendation for this Board of Commissioners to review that was unanimously voted on, not once, but twice, with the local Republican Executive Committee of Gates County, North Carolina?
Yes, I do, and I've turned it over to the Commissioners for their review prior to giving my report tonight and prior to the calls to the, in Raleigh, the Election Board.
I understand. My last question to you, sir, is, these Commissioners, has any of them, at any given time, reached out to Mr. Chris Odom from Ure, being recommended from the Republican Party unanimously to be considered by this Board of Commissioners?
I would not know the answer to that.
Madam Chair, may I defer that question to you then for an answer? Did any Commissioner in Gates County ever reach out to Chris Odom for the consideration of representation of the Ure precinct?
We received your nomination, we discussed it, and we followed General Counsel on many levels as far as how we're supposed to follow the general statute, and that's what we did. I'm not gonna ask the other Commissioners to speak up or say anything, because we followed the general statute, just like I just read, just like the Counsel for this county advised us to do. So whatever we did, we did it legally and transparently as far as we could, confidentiality once we met with the attorneys, not only on his level, but state attorneys looking at this general statute.
I understand. I understand that we have two totally interpretations of the state statute, especially one being in conflict with the other. I will see you all on Election Day. Madam Chair, I thank you for the time to present to the County Commissioners my questions, and Counselor, thank you very much, sir. God bless you all.
Next.
Mr. Ed Webb.
Edward Webb and I live in Gatesville, North Carolina. I'm hoping everybody there recognizes me and knows me. I'm coming to you all tonight with three hats. That's why I have three hats on. I'm gonna speak first of all about the hunters. We've got a situation that occurred in the county last week, where we had a dog that was shot, shot through the shoulder for no reason whatsoever. The citizen in question was questioned, and I want to commend the Sheriff and the Sheriff's Office and his personnel for doing the job that they did on that situation. Not only did they find the person that did it, they got a full confession. That person was criminally charged for shooting a dog with animal cruelty. We're all citizens too. We enjoy the sport of hunting. There's several of us, several hundred of us in this county alone. And we are law-abiding citizens. We do what the law allows us to do with our dogs. We treat them well. We take care of our dogs. We do what we have to do. Spending thousands of dollars each year, and for somebody just to shoot a dog because he went across the corner of his property is totally uncalled for, totally uncalled for. What I'm up here for though is to speak on behalf of the hunters, and to let everybody know what a fine job the Sheriff's Department did. I'm very, very proud of my predecessor, very proud of it. Thank you. I take that hat off. Now I come to you as a citizen and a former employee. I would like to speak to you all about the treatment of our county employees at this time, under our new manager. There's situations where, as Ms. Truman intu about, the way they're being treated, afraid to say anything, afraid to even ask a question, afraid to object to anything at all against our County Manager because of retaliation, suspension, a possible firement. It's totally uncalled for, folks, totally uncalled for. I don't know what, Mr. Wilson, I don't know what the deal is, but you need to slow it down a little bit. There's a lot of unhappy citizens in this county right now, a lot of unhappy citizens. $600,000, we beat that down. Let's talk about the 911 center. Want to move the 911 center right here to the old prison. Ladies and gentlemen, if y'all are familiar with the building that's out there, it's nothing more, more former, nothing but basically a old portable classroom. We all been in portable classrooms, correct? Remember those in school? They want to move it, wants to move it out from the courthouse where we got brick walls, a solid roof, we got all that equipment, all the generators, we got the equipment and so forth there.
Please, please direct your comments to the Commissioners.
I'm speaking to everybody, speaking to everybody.
Direct your comments to the Commissioners.
For everybody to sit there and take them and move them to a mobile For, for everybody to sit there and take them and move them to a mobile classroom. What's the first thing the school board does when they have a tornado or hurricane warning? They bring all the kids in and out of the mobile classrooms and put them inside the building. That doesn't need to take place, folks, doesn't need to take place. Next thing, again, back to the employees. Employees having to make an appointment to come in to see you, speak to you, can't talk to you, afraid of retaliation. My question to you all commissioners is, and just with this, where does it stop? I have citizens calling me and talking to me all the time. No later than today, I had three farmers stop and talk to me about things. The people in the community are talking amongst ourselves. Mr. Wilson, I don't know what your plans are staying here in the county. I really don't know. As far as I know, you're renting a place here in the county, and from what I've been told, you usually don't stay much more than about five, six months. Well, they mentioned about y'all doing an evaluation on it. Y'all need to look at it hard, folks. You need to rein this county manager in, need to do something, and the citizens are watching you all and depending on y'all to help keep this county where it is. When a former commissioner makes the comment on Facebook that he's sorry about the way the county is going and some of the things that, that he was involved in, decisions that he was made, and makes a statement that he says, "Well, I hope the county gets better", but in the direction it's going, it's not. So y'all need to think about that. I'm just up here speaking as just a citizen. Thank you much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Wade Yates.
I just got one hat. And it's Drumhill Hump Club. My name's Wade Yates. I live on 172 Hazelton Road. We had a problem about a month ago, and the sheriff's office had to be called, and I think some of you folks, I believe now, have got letters from the, one of the citizens that the sheriff's department was called on. I just wanted to clarify what actually took place and what happened there. The dogs that we had, we had two dogs that got up in a person's yard. Now whether they caught them or not, I can't say, but the dogs were in their yard and wasn't moving. We've got tracking boxes on these dogs. We can tell within a foot where that dog's at. We knew they were in the yard, but they hadn't moved for 45 minutes. Now, I don't know what you would think about that, but to me, it sounds like the dog might be injured or dead even. So we called the sheriff's department and asked them to come out and check it out. They come out and they checked it out and found the dogs in the yard. Well, the whole time the sheriff was up there, this lady was just on and on and on, degrading. And he kept his cool, and he calmed the situation that could have turned ugly. I don't know if you folks realize or not, but these same people have been at least two or three different reports on them filed over the last three years. And they come out with guns. We've had some of them in court because they shot into the woods where hunters were at. And it's the same, same group of people. But the sheriff come up and he did away, or he, he quelled the situation and he put it out away. I mean, all of us hunters out there have got guns, and you know, we're trying to be law-abiding citizens. We just, if a citizen's got a problem with a hunter, all they got to do is pick up the phone and call 0210, and the sheriff's office will show up and help them out. They haven't got to confront a bunch of armed hunters and make a situation turn real ugly. And we just need that word to get out, that they can go to the sheriff's office and they can address the situation. The sheriff, he come out, he did an outstanding job. So regardless of what was reported to you folks on the commissioners board here, I just wanted to tell you that all the hunters in Gates County, we stand behind the sheriff. We stand behind him, the Sporting Dogs Association stands behind him, and we're proud of what he's done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. That's it? Okay.
Thank all of you that came before us tonight to provide citizen comments. Now we move to administrative reports. Mr. County Manager?
I'd like to report unless Ms. Outland wishes to make any reports on the financial situation.
I just have a quick update with the sales tax revenue, since I did not have that information at the last meeting. We've received two months of sales tax revenue thus far, and in your, in your packet, there is a sales tax revenue kind of summary sheet, and with what we budgeted in total as of July 1st, we would need to average $227,917 on average each month to meet what we budgeted. Based on the two months which would have been collected for July and August, we are averaging So we are already ahead of what we need on average, but again, that's only two months worth of, worth of data, so that, that could change by the next, the next time we meet. So I did want to update you on that, and currently we are still, the auditors are still reviewing our information, we're still pulling items that they are testing, so that is still ongoing right now. I didn't know if anyone had any questions.
So all records were here the last week in October?
They were supposed to come onsite the last week in October, October, but they did not. We've been doing, we started last year using an online link where we upload the documents, and then they came onsite for a couple of days. They came onsite back in July and did some of the, the field work at DSS because they have a lot of things to pull for the grant, the federal and state grant money that the county receives for that.
Any other question for Ms. Outland?
Madam Chairman, not a question, but a comment. The, the, our last meeting, we talked about what we expected in the budget as far as revenues and what have you. Are those, are those the items that came through that you reported tonight?
The sales tax, that's typically what I report on each month, since Chris Hill reports on the tax amounts. This is the other kind of bigger piece that we budget for in, in the budget, so that's why I report on that. So far, we're on track, but again, it's hard to say with two months worth of data how solid that, that is or how that might change.
And I think also we saw from our ABC, county ABC, an increase.
Yes.
Is, are you seeing that as well and projecting that? Because was it 30,000?
30,000.
We, we typically don't project that in, in the budget. I think last year there were profits, I guess, made through the ABC board that were to be given to the county, so.
There's a former law, but they have, they keep so much, and anything above that comes back.
Right.
Very well, and of course, you know, we want to think that probably COVID did that, but have you seen, kind of looking back, and I know you as a, as a CPA would do that, through the years, has there been an increase in the ABC?
I'm not, I'm not sure, since, since we, that, that money does not come to, to us directly, it's, so I'm not, I'm not real sure on that. We could consult probably the ABC report, audit report as well.
Okay, very well. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Outland.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill is off, he's been off for a couple of days, but he did send in his report, so it's in your packet if you have any questions, maybe the county manager, or hold it out until Mr. Hill returns. I don't see any red flags in that report.
And with some doubtful elections that might watch you here at this time, hopefully that continues.
Okay. Any other observations? Hearing now. We move on to public hearings, the modification of an installment financing contract with Sterling Bank. I entertain a motion to open public hearing for the Board of Commissioners, modification of an installment financing contract with Sterling Bank.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Been properly moved and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. Okay, staff presentation, Mr. County Manager.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Early upon arriving at the county, I, I did have the opportunity to take a look at the, at the county's finances, especially with particular interest to the county's debt situation, just, just to see if there were any opportunities for any refunding or modifications to that debt that could realize with positive savings to, to the county. Working with Davenport Public Finance, I've worked with them on numerous occasions. They provide excellent advice in municipal finance, and upon examination of our loans, there, there was one that was identified as a possible candidate for what's referred to as, as refunding, as we all more commonly know as refinancing. This was a 200, or a 2018 installment, installment financing contract with Sterling National Bank that was presented as a, as a possible opportunity. An RFP process was put out by, by the county, and we did receive four proposals that were reviewed. Prior to that, Davenport had actually approached Sterling Bank just to see would they be willing to do a modification to, to the, to the terms of the loan that could realize there's some cost savings. And at that time, they, they, they did not have an interest in doing so, but interesting enough, they did present. They were one of the four proposals that we received to do a modification, and their, their proposal ended up being the best out of the four in that it provided us with the highest debt savings. And with, with this being a modification, it's, it's also much easier because you're, you're not going through a, a refinancing with an entirely different bank or financial institution, so you're still dealing with the same bank, you're simply modifying the terms. And in short, what, what the, the terms that were, that were modified was that Sterling agreed to reduce the interest rate on this loan, which was scheduled to be retired in 2038, from the current 3.9% interest rate to an interest rate of 2.3%. So that, that was a very fair drop in the interest rate. In exchange for that, Sterling Bank provided a term that the county would not seek to either refinance or to pay off this loan for the next 10 years or until December 2031. And that was, you know, if they were going to reduce the interest rate, they, they wanted to make sure they would still receive a decent return with that, with that reduced interest rate. Davenport reported that. I, I thought that that was a, a very fair exchange in terms, the, the interest rate for us hanging on to the, the loan for, for 10 years, because like I said, the, the loan term was until 2038, so it was not even for the whole duration of the remainder of the loan. Looking at, at what this saved the county, we looked at the savings at the interest rate, we also estimated all the costs that were involved in the issuance of this modification, and the savings less the cost, the county's estimated savings through this modification action, if approved by this board, would result in a savings of $862,121. The law firm of Sands Anderson, they also provided much assistance in this process as bond counsel in terms of putting together, you know, doing research and in the preparation of, you know, many of the required documents, even for something far less complicated as a modification. Once again, I've worked with both Davenport and Sands Anderson in the past. Both of these firms have provided exemplary service. I think once again, they, they have brought, brought me with another proposal for a significant cost savings through this modification, and I thank them for that. And in order for this to move forward, the, the board would have to adopt a resolution that has been prepared and included in your meeting packet at the conclusion of the public hearing, and I do strongly recommend that the county proceed with this loan modification to realize this savings. And Mr. Ted Cole with, with Davenport Public Finance, he is here this evening, and I'm sure he would be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
You come to the podium, please.
Ted Cole.
Mr. Cole?
Good evening.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you again as well. I'm Ted Cole with Davenport. We have worked with the county before, in fact, helped you all put this loan in place back in 2018 for the central middle school. Mr. Wilson gave a great overview of the process we went through. Ultimately, Sterling, who's the current lender, came around, they did submit a proposal, was much more favorable than the other lenders, those would have been new banks. They waived the prepayment penalty that we had put in the original loan when we closed that loan in 2018. They waived that, and they reduced the rate from a 390 to a 2.30. They did extend the no-call period out to 2031 as part of the, the modification. So the savings net of the cost of issuance, as you said, about 862,000, they're relatively front-loaded and they decline over time. It's, we're not extending the debt, we're not shortening the debt, we're leaving the amortization exactly like it is, so it's going to pay off at the exact same pace as it would have had you done nothing, just at a lower rate. On average, it's about 50,000 a year. As you said, there's a public hearing this evening, and there is a resolution for you all to consider. Included in that resolution is something called a modification agreement that just memorializes the terms of the modification, and that's really all that's needed in terms of action. And a transaction like this will go to the local government commission in Raleigh, but it go, they're able to take those as an informational item even after the modification closes because it's not a refunding, it's not a new loan, it's modifying an existing loan. So quite often we do these when the bank is willing to do it. The LGC likes to see them and know what has occurred, but they're able to, to look at them, in this case, say at their January meeting, as an informational item, whereas had we done a refunding with another bank, they would have had to have approved it prior to the loan closing. So all of that's to say, if you all choose to move forward with the resolution, this is the only official action needed, and then what happens from here is the documents are finalized, signed, and I suppose it's recorded. We are proposing, or the bank is proposing to use the exact same collateral as they have on the loan today.
I think, I think we talked about, I mean, since it's a modification, you know, the, the timeline is much more expedited, and I think we were one time talking around December 22nd, but I think it might be. it might be as quick as December 9th.
That's correct. The bank had said they would like to close this by December 22nd. Prelimarily, talking with the bank and the working group, as we call it, we've identified December 9th, but that could move a day or two if there's a problem with signatures. So really not committing to anything you haven't already. The prepayment term for this new modified loan would be longer. It would go out to 2031, but it still would have seven or so years left after that where there may be an opportunity to do something with it again, perhaps.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No question, but did I understand $50,000 a year is about the savings?
That's on average, yes, sir. They're kind of front-loaded, and they step down. There are savings all the way through. When I simple math, the $862,000 divided by roughly 17 years left on the loan, we're at about $50,000 a year on average.
Roger. Kind of a no-brainer.
It's function, I think, of a couple of things. We're in a lower rate environment, and this loan has performed for them for now three, four years. I think they recognize that they've got good collateral, they've got a good county that they've lent to, and I think they've assessed the risk of the loan, and that's reflected in the lower rate.
We agree with that.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have staff input, I mean, public input? No public input?
I make a motion to come out of a public hearing.
Second to have a motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion to come out of a public hearing. Do I have a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Okay, we're out of public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you. I like your new meeting room. I think the last one was across the street.
Thank you, Ted.
Board discussion before we ask for a motion?
I think let's, Commissioner Freeman said it's a no-brainer. I concur.
Okay, I guess we're ready for a vote. Motion to, okay, we closed the public session. All right. What is the pleasure of the board? What actions, if any actions, you want to make? Do you want to go ahead with the resolution?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we, we've all had the document, the resolution, prior to the meeting, as well as the savings all mapped out for us. I would make the motion that we adopt the resolution pertaining to what was just discussed in public hearing. That's my motion.
I'll, go ahead.
I will second it. Thank you.
I have a motion to approve. In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Second public hearing is proposed rescinding of the Gates County Personnel Ordinance. Motion to open public hearing for the Board of Commissioners, proposed rescinding of the Gates County Personnel Ordinance.
Shall move.
Second.
Been properly moved and second, that we open public hearing for the Board of Commissioners, proposed rescinding of the Gates County Personnel Ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This takes back a little while. Currently, the Gates County matters that deal with personnel are governed by a Personnel Ordinance, and this ordinance was originally adopted and has been amended several times since August of 2006. In March of 2018, the county did contract with a company called MAPS and Personnel Services Company, which everybody knows and refers to as the MAPS Group, and they presented to Gates County a classification and pay plan and a personnel and personnel policy recommendation notebook. The preparation of the personnel policy was part of this study. It was really a three-part study that looked at salaries of the positions, it looked at the job descriptions and qualifications of county personnel, and it also did take a look at the personnel policy, and a draft personnel policy was prepared, and that was all part of the charge of the MAPS Group to do. Now, while the Board of Commissioners, you have previously reviewed the elements of this comprehensive personnel study, but there was never any final action on the proposed personnel policy document that was recommended by the MAPS Groups. And they did recommend moving from a Personnel Ordinance to a Personnel Policy. And so what I was trying to do by bringing this up was to try to bring some closure to that study, which had not yet occurred. Should the board decide to move from the present Personnel Ordinance to a Personnel Policy, there are certain actions that would be required. Since the present document isn't ordinance, the conduct of an advertised public hearing would be required, and that's a procedural requirement of the state code. If you wish to adopt, amend, or rescind an ordinance, a public hearing must take place on that issue. And should the board, you know, wish to rescind the present Personnel Ordinance and replace it with a new Personnel Policy document, that public hearing had to take place, and that's why we're going through this procedural requirement this evening. The opening and closing of a public hearing to receive public comment does fulfill this legal obligation. No action is immediately required by the board this evening to rescind the current ordinance. In fact, I do not recommend that the board take an action this evening on the current Before the board would take an action on the ordinance, and it could be to keep the ordinance and not rescind it, and since it was proposed for rescinding, you could take a lesser action to amend it, you should not rescind your current ordinance unless you do have something to immediately put in place, because you don't want the county to be sitting there with no personnel guidance at all. And so, and looking at them, I, as well as the MAPS Group, do recommend that the county move from a Personnel Ordinance to a Personnel Policy. And the main reason for that is that personnel policies are much more the norm in looking at personnel matters, because you do have certain flexibility with a policy that you would not have with an ordinance, and you also have very rigid procedural requirements that have to take place in administering those personnel procedures and regulations when they are in an ordinance form. Basically, you can be more nimble in making policy decisions, personnel policy decisions and actions, when you actually do have a policy as opposed to having an ordinance. To adopt a Personnel Policy, what would need to be prepared, and I would prepare that just so you would have it in the event you would need it, would be a resolution to adopt a Personnel Policy. I have begun reviewing the MAPS Group proposed Personnel Policy. I believe that it does require some modification. It does require some change, and I am interested to receive input from this public hearing and other sources while, you know, that review is taking place. But I still contend that, you know, that you should move from an ordinance to a policy, and I don't recommend an action other than the opening and closing of that, of your public hearing this evening, and then any discussion, any comments you may want to share with me concerning either the existing ordinance and/or the proposed policy, so I can have the benefit of that. I would like to try to bring this matter back to you at your December meeting, if not then your January meeting, at the latest for an actual action, so that this matter that you began back in 2018 can receive closure in one form or another.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I see Chrissy Barham in the audience. She's our HR person, payroll person. Will you come to the podium and give us the history of this Personnel Policy? Mr. Wilson wasn't here when this was adopted, not adopted, but the MAPS Group did the study and did the recommendation, so we need to hear for benefit of all those here and listening about this policy and the ordinance. Good afternoon, Ms. Barham.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, welcome. So what do you want to know exactly?
I want to know about the history of this, because I'm hearing, and I wasn't, you know, I was not here, Mr. Cradock wasn't here, Mr. Wilson wasn't here, but you were. And what I've been hearing and seeing on email is all this, what we're getting rid of the ordinance. And I'm hearing that we're rescinding, not getting rid of, rescinding it because the MAPS Group itself, the study the county did back then instituted, recommended it, but the Board of Commissioners never adopted it. I want to know if the county, what was the process? I don't want to take all night. I just want to know, okay, give us a summary of how we got here, the best you know, as far as were the staff at that time involved? Did they see it? Do they have it?
Yes. There was a committee of about nine, I believe, employees. I'm not sure the exact, it's nine or 12. Some were department heads, some were not, and they were throughout the whole organization of different departments. They read the policy. They didn't get together and meet. They just sent the policy, read the policy, and if they had questions, they sent questions Other than that, they seemed to have a problem. The policy has some benefits for the employees in it. And then after that, it was brought to the Commissioners. There was some issues the Commissioners had with it. Those things were tweaked. And then we had a meeting, I believe it was March of 2020, where we tweaked a little bit more and revised some more items in it. But then when it came up to be adopted, the Commissioners decided they were not ready to adopt it yet.
I think we got a working copy of it, and then we had the, all the revisions and all that was made, then it was tabled.
It was tabled, yes.
I think it was tabled. We did not vote yea or nay.
We did not.
So.
So, I mean, that's briefly, that's the briefest summary. And it's basically provided by the MAPS Group. It's kind of really what they recommend. And the problem with the being in the ordinance, as the County Manager has said, you couldn't even change a word in that, but they happen to have a public hearing. In a policy, you can at least make changes to update and benefit the organization more.
With a vote of the board?
Right.
And sometimes the state changes laws, the federal government changes laws, we would have to go through the public hearing all the time, and most of the organizations I belong to, they have policies, not personnel policy, not ordinance.
Right. And I feel like the other thing is in the ordinance, there are very vague gray areas, whereas we need more description.
Okay. Any other questions while we have Ms. Chrissy Barham at the podium?
Yes. Who would be making those decisions to change the policy if it went to a policy versus ordinance?
Well, the policies will be brought to the board, I believe.
Correct, yeah. I mean, staff is going to review, you know, I'm going to try to find out what comments or what changes were looked at before that were desired, and then bring back a document. That could still be subject to change. That's the one thing, should you wish to move to the policy, you would need to rescind the ordinance, but you would pretty much be at liberty to change however you wanted to on the policy, where with an ordinance, you can usually only move to something lesser or a certain degree, but with the adoption of policy, you're, you know, you can move in any direction in terms of modifications you would want to make.
And I think I heard you say that the staff would bring that forward. What staff would that be? The entire county's staff or what staff?
It would come from my office, and I would be working with Chrissy.
And it could even be.
So staff of two?
Department heads.
Yeah, the Department Manager, somebody might say something.
Let me clarify this. The directors and their staff under them would have input to this. All they have to do, not all they have to do, what they need to do is sit and look at the Personnel Policy and see where it could be improved, put those together in a summary and give it to Chrissy Barham, who is the HR person, who is on staff, directly reports to the County Manager, then the County Manager, even his staff, get those comments together, provide a draft of the comments and what they see, send it back out again, just like the County Manager just said, maybe December, maybe January. But this is not a done deal, and the staff will have input with this policy as before. If you look at the, I'm just going to say this, if you look at the marked-up copy that we have, when we discussed it in March 2020, it was marked up by the full board at that time. Every board member that was here marked it up. Every last one of us. I had just gotten the board, I remember that. And they were incorporated with the former clerk to the board. She provided the summary, the marked up, Ms. Melissa Lawrence, that's what she did, and gave it to all of us. Well, when she brought it to all of us, there were still things we wanted to tweak. And if we look in the minutes, in November or December of last year, we decided as a full board, we would table it again and would not bring it back up until we had a county manager. Y'all remember that? That's what we said, that's what's in the minutes. So when we tabled it the last time, we tabled it so that we could have the permanent county manager bring it up and sit and look at it again. Right, Chrissy? Yeah?
Sounds correct.
It's been looked at a lot of times, I think.
So we're going to, if you don't have any more input from the staff, would it be, I have to do the?
I just have one. What I anticipate fully to be part of my process is this just won't be staff-driven. This board does have a Personnel Board, and I would like to receive as much staff input and to craft that, then work with that with the Personnel Board of this Board of Commissioners. And when that group was satisfied, it would then be the Personnel Policy as brought forward and recommended by the Personnel Board to the full board.
Okay. Thank you, Chrissy. Ms. Barham, for your input. I needed, we needed that because we don't have the history of these two, the ordinance and the policy, so you can take your seat. Now, Board Clerk, clerk to the board, have people sign up for Personnel?
I have Ms. Emily Truman.
Okay, Ms. Emily. Thank you, Ms. Barham.
You are. Okay, several things to bring up. First, I just want to address what was exactly said by you guys right then, that at liberty, the board can change a policy, but not in ordinance, I believe is what we should say. At liberty, at liberty of you, without consultation with the county employees, at liberty, you can change that. Sure, you can receive a email, you can receive, you know, commentary from the staff, but at liberty, you can decide what you want to do. Again, I thought the Gates County Commissioners were supposed to be for the citizens and the employees in the county, not for the interests of yourselves. So with that being said, let me run through these little notes, because I couldn't, you know, spacing it solely off of what was actually brought up with you all today. Let's hit first. Some things that I really think you should look at if you're going to take suggestions. Now, be sure that you check out the holiday pay and the dates of holidays for 24-hour employees, because as of that, right now, Sheriff's Office and dispatchers, we're 24-hour employees. Do you know that we have Christmas Day on Saturday? County employees that spent Christmas away from their family do not get paid for holiday pay. That's something that should be recognized. I'd love to know who's on the Personnel Board. I didn't know there was one. I was told that it would be the County Manager and two others. I'm curious as to which two board members that is. I didn't count out any of them that. I also keep hearing the MAP group recommended, and the MAP group recommended, again, the MAP group recommended salary increases for most of the county employees. So we're willing to consider the MAP group's recommendations for the salary of our county manager and to change something that can be changed at liberty of you all, but not for the good of your employees. Now, that's a little concerning. It kind of shows that we don't really need y'all to have that flexibility with the policy. Also, let me bring up, since I'm sure many of people here expected, actually, before I do that, let me do this. The technology and social media policy, that the county will prepare and issue a technology and social media policy for all employees approved by the County Manager and updated as needed for technology changes. I'm curious if that's also going to be released for us, because I have received some indirect warnings myself about social media for just notifying the public issues at hand. I've had them come down through the chain of command to warn me, to tone it down, to watch what I said. Sounds a little threatening to me. Let me move on a little bit further. We're going to look at safety that you had in Section 10 of ARPS, I'm going to ARPS, five, Section 10, I believe. Safety, make sure that you pay attention to the dispatch office. I agree, they don't want you to go to a portable building, this is for shared web state. But our building's not at that, they have to code right down as it is. And being in a county office, that's a real concern. So be sure we're paying attention to those issues and that we're ready, ready to correct them. This should be amended. And then lastly, let me bring up the political activity. It's noted in here that it was a MAP suggestion that to be a candidate, or that you cannot be a candidate for nomination or election to the Office of County Commissioner. Well, I'm a county employee, as I stated. I'm also seeking to run for County Commissioner. For one, the effect of this would not be known before then, so I would think that that would not be applicable. But just to be sure, I beforehand emailed the school of government to ask if that was legal. And the school of government, which I have a copy for you all, if someone wants them to hand out, I don't know if I give them to you, Ms. Trump.
Give them to the Board Clerk.
I will. And I have more if anyone else needs one. But it states, global governments cannot prohibit employees from running for public office. They can prevent them from engaging in campaign activities while at work. See general statutes, we can look at Carolina General Statute 133A-99 for counties, which would be us. Now, it does play around the states that the county can terminate them if they win, which would be fully acceptable and also quite interesting, I believe, that came about. But the initial statement of be a candidate for nomination or election to the Office of County Commissioner is not legal pursuant to our North Carolina General Statutes that you guys just used to swear in the Commission of Craft. So before you move any farther in these issues, I hope that you recommend or reference the general statutes and truly consider what it's going to mean for you guys when you take away the safe of the community and the citizens and then warnings.
Next?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Need a motion to come out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As have it, disapproved. Board discussion.
Well, I, I heard one question, and I had already kind of put that in the, in my feeble mind. Who is the Personnel Board? I don't know who that is.
The Personnel Board is set up, I don't know how many years ago, but the Personnel Board is.
Yeah, it's been set up. Who is on the Personnel Board?
The county, the county manager, the vice chair, and the chair.
And that's all on Personnel Board?
That's all on the Personnel Board that I can find.
That's the way it was, you know, because it was, I was on Personnel Board and Billy Felton were on Personnel Board for several years.
And I know I was on Personnel Board when I served as Chair, but I thought we also had human, had payroll. I don't know, is she Human Resources now, or?
I think she attended when we had, when we had a, something that affected the budget.
I heard her referred to as Human Resources.
She served in that capacity at times as far as.
Christie would come to our, she left, okay.
Oh, okay.
But I thought Human Resources also part Personnel Board.
Yeah, I said she attended when, or the, the person did attend. I don't know if it's Christie, but they did attend.
I'm just wondering who, because.
I said, I think it's Christie. I don't know. Or, I don't know.
Currently, it's the, listen, it's the county manager, the chair, and the vice chair. That's what, but that's the procedures that I have read and I have seen. Is it perfect? No. That's one of the reasons we're going through all the policies and procedures and everything in this county, because it's not aligned, it's the way maybe for the ultimate governance of this county. That's what you do when you're trying to straighten things out. Is it going to stay that way? It will be under review. But we can't review it in isolation. We can't review it in two days or less. So this is not the only policy that we're reviewing to get it aligned with general statutes, ordinances, state and federal regulations, and North Carolina General, that's what we're trying to do. And there are going to be other policies we're going to be looking at, trying to get it aligned. And it's not done in isolation. When we bring it to the public, they will have input to the final. But the governing body, this is the governing body, duly elected, okay? When we sit here, we're the governing body. When we get these policies, we will take it on a serious consideration in whether it's 5-0, 4-1, or 3-2. If we approve it, it's approved. And we're not saying we're perfect. And these general statutes are loose. We know that, some of them. We have to look at them and look at them, get counsel, not only our county attorney, but other attorneys to look at it, because as the chair, I was trained to look at policies and procedures, federal, state, local, statutes, whatever it is, because that's what governs this county. Not my personal opinion, not the staff and citizens' personal opinion. It is by statute, it is by legal, because we have to. And we're not trying to do anything to the staff that's illegal or oppressive. And if we find that it is, we will address it. And that's what I wanted to say to the citizens. Yes, we get emails, and I can't answer them all. I answer some of them. You call me, I answer the phone. Just because you don't know who I talk to singularly, don't mean I don't, might not have answered yours, because I probably didn't get it, because I have landline problems. I'm dropping calls all over the place. But my point is, this governing body is as transparent as we can be legally and confidentially. There are some things we just can't talk about until we get it together. So when we give you the information, it's the right information. So we have had the public hearing, proposed rescinding of Gates County Personnel Ordinance. We've heard from the staff, we've heard public input, we've had the board discussion. Is there other board discussion remaining?
I'd just like to make two comments. One, I believe Mrs. Reitry, the former county manager, was serving as HR during part of this process, when we were doing Personnel. So that, I think that was. Also, the, the copy of the Personnel Policy you have is outdated, because that one about political office is struck out of the last, the latest one.
May I ask how we received a new one?
Excuse me?
May I ask how we can receive a copy of that?
Well, it hasn't been approved, but, but, you know, we have different copies. I showed you, I had an original, the work copy, and then I had one for April that we tabled. It was.
For staff input, we need to have that.
Well, it's not a.
We hear you.
We hear you, but.
Let me say, let me just, just stop this. As much as we can, we're going to share that Personnel Policy, proposed Personnel Policy. That's what we're accustomed to doing. And we may not do it the way people think we're going to do it. We got to get the process. We're not going to do anything about a Personnel Policy or any other policy without transparency. These are policies that govern not only the inner workings of local government, it keeps us safe as the governing body. So we're not going to intentionally do anything illegal. I got my county attorney sitting down at head of the table. He always calling me. I've been in his office more in the last six months, trying to make sure that what we do is legal and ethical. And my concern is that before we can even work and get things clarified, everybody knows something we don't. And they, they see the boogeyman everywhere. And so when we don't respond, it's because we don't want to put something out that's not true or misinformation or half information. I respond, I'm actually received, I listen to you, and I'm, for actual, my colleagues do too. We're not perfect. We're just as human as anybody sitting in this room or on social media or Zoom or wherever they're watching. We will do the best we can to take our time with this. That's why, I think that's why they never passed it, because they had issues with it and they were going through it. Am I right? They were going through it, taking their time, making sure that not only are we legal, but what's the best for the staff in Gates County, local staff and government. That's why it was tabled. There were issues that caused some of the Commissioners, from my memory, they didn't particularly want to have that in it. And they had to do more research. So we tabled it. So now we're trying to put it back on the table to get this thing, hopefully, passed one of these days, so that we can go back in there and look at the pay grades and things like that. We have been implementing, I think, trying to do the best we could with what we had. I don't see anybody on this table disagreeing with. We're doing the best we can with what we had, and we're going to do better than what we did before. And we don't need to be labeled this unless somebody, we're in discussion with the board now. So unless my colleagues have other things to add to the discussion, and I welcome that, as soon as we finish everybody discussing, I'm going to ask, what's your pleasure?
Well, I, I do have another comment, too, is, you know, when we talked about the flexibility and who would be making that decision, and, and from the Personnel Board's side, my, my statement is, is at last, our last Commissioners meeting, I asked, can we make a copy of the Personnel Ordinance proposed policy for every county employee to get and read and therefore have their comments before we get into discussing this?
As a chair, I have no hesitation to put that thing on the web, and you can print all day long. It's already there. Now, what is the right one or the wrong one? That's what we got to figure out. We got to figure out which one is on that thing. We're going to, we're going, let me tell you, because policies are, they're public. We're not hiding it. We just got to get the right one up there, apparently. So I'm looking at the board chair, I mean, the Board Clerk to the Board, to check it out as far as, is that the latest policy that we marked up? And if it's, if that's not the one, then we need to get the one that needs to be there so they can see. It's not hidden. It's on the website. The thing about sometimes, and I'm guilty of this, I won't go to the, to the, somebody's website and find what I'm looking for. I ask. It's right there. Just because we can't find it, doesn't mean it's not there. Because we don't go to the website, doesn't mean it's not there.
Madam Chair, the one that's on the website would be the.
Ordinance.
County ordinance.
Okay.
And it, it won't be the marked up, because we haven't voted.
Got you.
On the marked up.
Well, the county ordinance is there.
The one that's on the website.
Yeah.
We can't put one up there.
Until we do this.
Until we have the hearing.
We got to do this.
So it'll be the oldest one up there.
That is, that we have legally passed.
Right. And if anybody sees an issue with it.
I stand corrected, because they've been here longer than I have. I'm just trying to make sure that we put things out there so people can stop this misinformation and running amok with things that I'm not, I'm not aware of, or we didn't intend. What do you call it, unintended consequences? So we got an ordinance, right? You guess we got an ordinance.
The ordinance is the one outlier. It's not the.
Yeah, but really, at any, at any time, a county employee, if they saw something in the ordinance today, tomorrow, or 11 months from now, they could take it to, they could take that sheet, just print that one sheet that they have an issue with, that topic, and take it to their department head and let it work its way to the County Manager, and it works its way to the board, and we address it.
That's the way it happens. We're going, we're going to try to do better with what's on the website, what we did and did not do. Let me turn this. I had my phone on silent and it's trying to wake up. Can't wake it up. So are there any other discussions while I'm doing this? I don't want this to rain.
I think one thing that we did agree on when we've talked about it is that we do want to go with the policy rather than the ordinance. And again, there's, we need to review what we've already marked up, because we didn't finish.
No.
Because we were waiting for a county manager to come on board. We need to go back to what has been marked up and, and then possibly see what county employees or, you know, would like to see addressed. But would like to see if we can get it resolved.
So if we, if we do mention and say that we're going to have a policy, then do we still operate under what we are doing now as far as personnel and not change anything?
We, we have to.
We have to.
Right. And so, so yeah.
It's just only changing the name for my.
I understand that. But earlier, we said flexibility, and I asked the question, who would make decisions on policy, changing the policy? And it would be staff, is what County Manager said. So I was wondering, what staff would make those changes?
Staff would be responsible for administering and enforcing the policy. If there are going to be changes made to that policy document, it would come back to this board. But, but it would come back to this board without the necessity of a public hearing process, because it's a policy document. But the, the policies are yours, that you see fit for your employees. Staff, my role and other staff, you know, department heads also rely on this document in trying to figure out, you know, situations with their employees. Staff uses this to, you know, to administer it and apply it. We don't change the terms of it. Any, any change of terms would be an amendment to the policy, and that would come back to this board. But that's just like, one of the things, with it being a policy, that can be done much, you know, at a much quicker pace without as much bureaucracy, so to speak, because it can just be put on the next meeting agenda. Here's the identification of, of the problem, you know, what's the board's pleasure, without having to go through a formal advertised public hearing process to accomplish the same thing. But no, staff, staff would not change the content of the Personnel Policy.
So staff would not be making. So staff would not be making, in other words, that flexibility term that, that I heard earlier would not mean that staff would be, a appointed staff would be making policy?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Not, not to the flexibility of actually changing the language of the Personnel Policy. No, that, that would not be a flexibility or a possibility by staff.
But they could request a change.
Yes. Yeah, if-
But we would have the final say.
Yes. Just like if staff, you know-
And that's like in any organization.
If, if we find a prob, you know, Lisa finds a problem with what she believes to be a problem with the zoning or subdivision ordinance, she can bring that forward. And if you believe it's a problem worthy of examining, then you would authorize the scheduling of a public hearing, much longer, lengthier process. Same thing can be done for this if the department head, you know, myself, come to you, say we believe there's something that needs to be fine-tuned or there's something that's ambiguous in this that, you know, you give it to three department heads, you get three different readings. Well, then obviously, we need to tighten up the language and we would bring that to this board and you would determine, A, is there a problem that, that needs changing? And then B, you would decide what that change would be.
So what I'm hearing is the last paragraph that, that is in the packet, if you look at, from the county manager. It says, "The staff does ultimately recommend that the county move from a Personnel Ordinance to a Personnel Policy. The policy document recommended by the MACT group is a good starting point, but staff contends that it still requires modification to better fashion it to the needs of the county and should consider any comments on proposed modification that may result from the required public hearing." We've had comments from Ms. Truman, and we've noted that I've written them down. I'm quite sure we captured them by the clerk to the board. If there are any other comments that would be beneficial from the staff that may not have be here or staff, it doesn't prohibit them from going to their director and says, "I, I've read this thing and I've got a question about that." And let's move it forward and keep it moving until we get a Personnel Policy modified that, that we can, you know, use for the county. So do I have a motion? What's the motion?
Well, we need to change this title of this from Personnel Ordinance to Personnel Policy because we got to have something in place. We can't operate without a Personnel-
Yeah, I, I absolutely would not recommend you operate without any, without a Personnel Policy.
And then we're going to work on this, get it out to the staff. They report their concerns back to Personnel Committee, and then they'll report back to the-
Then the committee will make a report back to this board in terms of, you know, a final decision.
And then if we redo it, then that will replace the-
Yes. You would, you would take an action. If you decided you wanted to go with the recommended policy, you would take an action to rescind the ordinance-
The top-
Because you fulfilled your public hearing requirement. So you would rescind that and right on the heels of that, you would adopt a resolution putting in place the new Personnel Policy.
Having had, having had the public hearing and your recommendation to make you take the right process, what would your recommendation be as far as a motion for tonight?
A, a motion tonight would, would be a fairly simple one. A path, if you're happy with what you have and the ordinance that you have, then no motion is required and that's how the county would continue. If you wish staff to continue to examine the policy that was proposed by, by the consultant, having, trying to refine or make modifications to that, have that presented to the Personnel Committee and back to this board, would need a motion to, to have staff continue working on modifications to the draft policy, and that would be sufficient at this time.
So really, no motion to, to change anything, just motion to move forward?
Move forward with the process. If, if you would like to move towards the adoption of a policy, yes, it would be, because we don't have any specifics, because what we'd like to present would, would be the policy document itself. So staff needs to go through that process, getting input on that process, and then having that also, because that's one of the roles of, of a Personnel Committee, you know, of, of this board would be to look at things such as Personnel Policies to make recommendations to the full board for their consideration.
Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Move it on the floor.
I make a motion that, that we move to continue refining a Personnel Policy, hopefully to be adopted in, in the near future, with input from our county employees, county manager, and this board.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ready to vote? All in favor of the motion on the floor in a second. Say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Hear none? Moving forward. Clerk to the board will make that happen with the county manager. Thank all for their input for this important, very important, public hearing. Both of them are important. I see no old business, new business, 2021 general records retention schedule, local government agencies. You have it in your packet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Action requested, motion to adopt 2021 general records retention schedule. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adopt the 2021 general records retention schedule. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. 2021 program records retention schedule, local government agencies. I have a most, do I have a motion to adopt the 2021 program records retention schedule?
Okay. And this is the law, Law Enforcement and Sheriff's Office in tax-
Mm-hmm. Retention schedule.
Yeah. So I make a motion to approve the program record schedule.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. It's approved. Next, we have Chair update, and I'm going to be brief with this, but I'm going to give you an update from my position as far as what's been going on. Broadband update. Gates County has joined a six-county rural regional strategic approach broadband proposed for northeastern North Carolina led by the Rural Center of Patrick Woody. It includes Gates, Bertie, Hertford, Halifax, Martin, and Northampton. The Rural Center proposed to build upon our statewide broadband advocacy and our propensity building by working directly with county and municipal leaders in each of those counties and build a county-by-county strategy with Roanoke Connect to maximize the utility of state and federal broadband funds. We're going to explore county-level opportunity to use the ERP funding, and we're going to look at the structure of long-term system accountability. Potential sources with this consortium will be funded hopefully by the Federal Communication Commission, U.S. Department of Agriculture, U.S. Treasury, ARC funding, State of North Carolina, ARC funding, and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which was just passed by President Biden. Short term, we're having data gathering. We're going to have to form a broadband action team of which will include representation from key leaders in Gates County, the schools, the business community, public safety, healthcare, county official chamber, and others. That's going to be the committee we have to institute once we have the proposal. Tomorrow afternoon, I will be joined by the county manager for an initial meeting with the other five counties to begin discussing the proposal, and the Rural Center is hosting that. We're very excited about this opportunity because we're still going to be working with Roanoke Electric and Roanoke Connect. If you don't know, Curtis Wynn, last day of Roanoke Electric would be December the 13th. The interim is Marshall Cherry. So we're going to miss Curtis Wynn, but we still have continuity with Mr. Marshall Cherry. Other update, on behalf of the entire board and the county manager, I requested the Finance Director to look into funding a project manager position devoted to managing our ARC project compliance and the funding. Today, we received confirmation, we may use ARC funds to fund the position through the award term period, and that position must be 100% dealing with that ARC funding that we're going to get, and it would be tracked on specific projects on a weekly or pay period basis. So we are going to get a project manager in here to help us with the ARC plan, and we don't have a plan. We're behind. Gates County is behind, but we're going to catch up because we have to make sure that what we plan for the 1.4 million and more, that it got specific criteria, monitoring, implementation, audits, and our finance department is not equipped to do that on top of everything else that they do. So we can get funding for that, and that's a good thing for this county. On behalf of an approval of the board, I requested assistance from Congressman Butterfield's office to assist Gates County in identifying and applying for grants and appropriations opportunity. Reginald Speight was Congressman's, the Congressman's field liaison. He is now with the USDA as the State Director of Rural Development. I received a call from Mr. George Biddle, I think it was last week. He has been assigned to Gates to assist us in economic activities and other things. Nothing from him at this point. I just had the initial phone call, about an hour, and gave him a broad overview of, of Gates County and what we're looking at as far as possible grants and funding. So he's going to be the contact person to Reginald, who is the Director of Rural. With the approval of the full board, I requested special appropriation from Representative Howard Hunter for Gates County. I requested $250,000 to assist with the repairs at the community center. I communicated via text with Representative Hunter this morning, and when the budget is signed, Gates County will receive the $250,000. That'll go a long way helping with the community center and all the repairs that's needed. We are still awaiting notification of the NTIA grant that was for 1.9 million. Whether we get that grant or not, we're still going to continue to move forward because the project manager is going to help us with that. There's legislation at the state level that's going to hopefully induce some of that ARC money so we can use that broadband. But if we look in the budget, and I looked in the budget this morning, there's more money coming down from the state for broadband. There's more money coming from the federal government in broadband. We just have to have the people on the ground and the plan to access that funding, and that's why we need that project manager. County manager can't do it. We got to have somebody that full attention is on that funding and possible funding for water and sewage and everything else we need in this county for the infrastructure. I was in a Zoom meeting this morning with COA and the county school staff and others discussing college and career readiness. I attended the meeting to ensure the commissioners are fully engaged in the needs of the youth in this county that may be involved or need to be involved in the GED program, the adult high school program, and career focus assistance and next-gen programs. I also was in a Zoom meeting at four o'clock with EIC. They had a public hearing as far as the funding that's coming down. They're applying for a grant as they always do to help serve Gates County. They serve 10 counties. So I attended that public hearing to hear their proposal, and they're applying for three, over $301,000, and they're going to serve 10 counties. I asked how much of that, or how many persons in Gates County would be served. They said between four and five. They currently have four. They had five. One of our residents passed away. So that's what, that money is going to be for. There's a myriad of things that they do with that money as far as helping out with housing and energy and things like that. I will have another conversation with Ms. Rita Blair. She's the person that I'm going to work with on that to ensure that Gates County citizens get their fair share of those funds. I'm also looking at the next grant opportunity for housing is in January. I was alerted to that. So I'm going to be sitting in, with the county manager and the, and the board and ask them, what is your, what's your pleasure? Do you want us to, to apply for another URP grant like we did, you know, the replacement homes we had and repairs we had? Because that's going to come available in January. So if we're going to do that, we need to strike now and start getting that paperwork together so we'll know what we're doing. So that's an update from the chair. I would do this every month. So, and they know what I'm doing. You heard me say with the full knowledge and approval of the board, I'm not running amok. So I'm going to say it from this, this seat so you understand that we're moving forward in Gates County, one inch at a time. We have no plan because we've never had a plan, but we're working on one and you will hear about it. It's not going to be hidden because we need you to serve on the committed structures that we're going to develop. And you need to understand the needs of Gates County and the urgency of now. Other counties are moving and we have to get some traction. So these funds that we're getting, these positions we're trying to get, is essential to what we're trying to do. Next, we have Commissioner and County Manager comments. Who wants to start?
Comrade.
Okay. Mr. Owens?
I applaud the, the ARP project manager. And one of the reasons you said with that we're behind, but it's a moving target, the ARP. It's the first time ever for ARP Funds, American Rescue Plan. The dollar amount, you know, we've seen the dollar amount fluctuate until that's finally come down to a, a specific number. But it's a moving target as to how the money can be applied and how it can be used. We don't want to misstep that, and that's why we need this individual to come do that. It also keeps us from taking energy away from our staff, from our county manager, as well as from, from us, so that we can stay focused on other things. I do want to reiterate that the, the modification of a loan that was applied to Central Middle School saved over $862,000 over the term of that loan, and that comes out of roughly $50,000 a year. So that was a great step in doing that. Althea gets all the credit for Howard Hunter's $250,000 coming to the county. She worked, I believe, solely on her own on that. If anybody else helped her, you raise your hand. But she's out there working hard for that, for those types of things. We did talk briefly about it, and the chairwoman mentioned that, that in the future, when we're looking at grants, working with grants, we've seen opportunity to reach out to citizens in the county to come and serve on a committee, maybe a small committee, so that we don't get overwhelmed with having, you know, five or six people to meet. But when we're working on a grant, you may hear us reach out to say, hey, we want some, some bodies, some volunteers from the county to come work on this grant, and then other volunteers to assist us on another grant. So those are things that we, that we might be, you might be hearing from us. Madam Chair?
Okay. Want me to go?
I'm off.
Okay. I have been working on trying to help a little bit with tourism for the county. Been in contact with several people on the state level. There is a program called Visit North Carolina where businesses can be advertised and people can look up, and it has been quite effective. We have businesses, businesses here that could benefit from that program. And there is a cost involved, but there is also some funding to cover that cost for smaller counties or counties that are in the low wealth areas. And there are a couple places. Merchant's Mill Park is already up layer. I believe there's a couple of the being, Red and Brightwell, the guest homes. But there are all businesses, you know, Studio 32, thinking about our businesses that are already here that could benefit with free advertising across the state. So basically, it's something I'm looking into. There are also, and I would say, Sarah Hill at the Dusel Swamp Visitor Center has helped. She's a county resident, and she is very involved in it. So she's helping, is helping. NC Farms, Visit NC Farms is a program that they have. It is across the state. I've talked to Ann Baggett, and Cameron Lowe is one in Currituck. The counties in the Northeast have kind of grouped together, and it's leading to, because there's a lot of interest in visiting NC Farms at this time. And, you know, we have, you know, some farmer markets here that could- you know, some farmer markets here that could benefit. We have a campground. We, they said, any people who have bees and beehives, they, people are interested in getting back to the, to see how all this is done, so there's some potential there. And like I say, talking with them. Also, there is African-American Experience of Northeastern North Carolina. It is a gold medal winner for the state in tourism this, last year, and it was six counties that were involved in that. Gates was not one of those. I have talked to Cameron Kudler. She's tourism in Currituck. They are going to open it up, and we, our name is in the mix to be included so that people want to, it is like a trail that they can go from place to place in Northeastern North Carolina to visit sites of African-American legacy. Certainly, we have the EIC building, which was a Rosenwald school. We have some churches here that date that. Working, trying to make sure that we're included. Do have two aces in the hole on that one, because I know two of the people on the committee. So I feel like we'll be, get invited to join, to be included, which I'm really thrilled by. And yes, we're going to need some people to work on that too, because they don't want just a, last year it was just virtual because of COVID, but they want, you know, markers or things to see. So we're going to have to get call, get some people to help with that, and I'm really excited about that, to get that started as well. Also, GEM says this week, Food Drive Saturday morning, 8:30 to 10:00 at the Old Medical Site. Hope to see you out there. Spread the word. You know, prices in grocery stores are going up all the time. We do have people who are in need. Please pass the word so they will come and get, we give a lot away. I'd like to shout out, give a shout out to REA. Roanoke Electric gave a thousand pounds, a thousand pounds of food for this drive this Saturday. So, thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
Very good. That's good to hear. I know that all of you didn't just come, or you're watching just to see us sit here and how we dress, but our primary purpose for being here and in being in front of you, not only is it because we have to, as your commissioners, but also to bring forth the things that you want to see, the things that you write us about, the things you call us about, the things you stop us when we're busy with other things to tell us about, and you want to hear them, and you want to hear us say them, and you want to hear us ask those questions to our colleagues and to the others that serve you. So that's our primary purpose. Sometimes we kind of get lost in that. We think maybe that, you know, we can, we can have funds from here, here, and here, but Gates County is what Gates County is, and that's why we serve you, and we serve you. That's the primary purpose. Again, using that term, primary purpose is to serve you. So we're not going to change Gates County from an agricultural county or from the timber aspects, but we are going to look for every economic development, and you'll hear that term, and you'll see that term come forth. In our last meeting, it did come forth, and it was mentioned, but myself, I would like to see it explained a little bit better for you, because I've had so many people complain, not argue, but complain about that that was brought forward, about such expenditures is going to come from the general fund, this, that, and the other. So I would like for y'all, our citizens, and everybody that has commented to me, written me emails, called me, to understand that. So in some time, maybe Madam Chairman will get us to lay that out for you, because we didn't really explain it to every degree to where everyone understands what's going on. We talk transparency, we tell transparency, but sometimes it just gets covered in words and monies and this, that, and the other. So I'll step away from the purpose, but on the 18th of November, we're going to have the National Rural Health Day. And as Madam Chairman knows, I kind of talk a little bit about what's going on with the COVID. But one thing that I have failed to mention in our meetings, I think I've mentioned in some of our other sessions, if you will, but that is ALS. And we have concentrated on that in eastern North Carolina. Certainly, we lost one of our dear commissioners to that, and we've lost other friends, but probably Jimmy Hunter, Catfish Hunter, if you will, is one that brought that, and Lou Gehrig's disease. So ALS, ALS really is confined a great deal to northeastern North Carolina. So we, in looking at your health and in public health, are always looking for what's causing it, where is it coming from, and this, that, and the other. So we haven't forgotten about that, and several of you have mentioned ALS to me as a, as a comment for our health. Now, under COVID, I still say get your, get your vaccination. Still hear a lot of folks that have not, and still think that once they receive the vaccination, that the sticklers from their refrigerator will jump over on their arm and stick to their arm because of that vaccination. Not seen that happen yet, but there are some that truthfully believe that. Just going to say these things, I know that you know it, but avoid close contact with people who are sick. We kind of know somewhat. You can look at somebody, sometimes you can tell. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth. Stay home when you're sick. Stay home when you're sick. And that's important. And then there are other things, but get vaccinated is the primary purpose. Our vaccination rate stayed about the same in Gates County, and I reported that last time with the numbers. I have those numbers. If anybody wants to see them, be glad to give them to you and tell you about them. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, County Manager. Do you have anything to add, anything?
Just looking at, I've met with the administrator for the three housing grants that we have. I'm trying to unravel and understand the status of those grants so we can try to get them completed and closed as quickly as possible. Also looking, still looking at some ways to, in terms of reorganizing, reorganizing staff as well as departments, and I will have proposals for you at the December meeting. Also, because I do believe them, looking at some various means of regional cooperation that can potentially lead some, to some efficiencies and cost savings. Right now, I'm looking at some opportunities in emergency management for that, and may have something to report to the board at your next meeting on that front.
Thank you. Mr. Craddock, again, welcome to the governing board of Gates County. If you, as you can hear when we report out, we have specific things we report on. This board works by committee. It works by assignment. Therefore, we hold each other accountable, because one of us can't do it all. So when you heard us report out, those are their assignments or their interests, and they report out, and they'll let us know, each one of us know, before we get to the board meeting. So if we have any questions, they can go back and get those questions answered, so they can answer from here. You will receive committee assignments in December. I believe we do it in December. Your has not had representation for a committee assignment since 2020, because you have to have committee assignments in order to be engaged. That's what you just saw. If you have, you don't have any committees, or you don't have any assignments, then you're not holding yourself accountable or us. I talked to Mr. Craddock about, what, 10 minutes last night, and I asked him what was his passion. I asked him what was his focus to help us move the county forward, and I was encouraged by his response, which I'm not going to repeat. But I think he's a good fit. I'm saying it to your face, to this governing board. You got a lot to learn, but I think you're a quick study. I looked at your resume, and you talked about where you work and his duties, and I think he has the heart for Gates County to serve all the citizens. And Mr. Craddock, I told you last night, when we're behind this desk, we're the governing body. We are not Republican, we're not Democrats. We are the governing body. We're too small to play politics. You know, we play politics at election time, but when we're sitting together, this is your governing body, and we don't play politics. We're apolitical. When you start playing politics, you get nothing done. And so I welcome him on behalf of the board, and we're sincere about that. We'll help you, ask questions. I saw Commissioner Owens helping you with your packet, turning pages and things. You'll get used to it. And we will shuffle some of our responsibilities, some of our committees around, and the new committees will be, you know, divided up amongst us, because you want that linkage. That's how we link with the county citizens, by serving on committees and boards. That's how that happens. So we welcome you, ask questions. I will be meeting with you singularly. And let me say this, we can't meet more than two of us at a time. If we have three commissioners in the same room, that's a, that's a public, that's a public meeting. That's why you don't see us gathering, unless it's a function, like a, you know, a public function that we're attending, and we just talk about anything, but we cannot talk about business. But, you know, optics are very important. They see four of us, they know we up to something, because they know if we meet three of us at a time, that's a, that's a public meeting. We don't do that. We cannot do that, Mr. Craddock. We cannot do that. So I'm just putting that out there, because I think sometimes we assume people know. We assume the audience know, and sometimes I don't know what I think I know. So I welcome comments tonight. I'm, you know, I'm very sincere about that, and we're going to do the best job we can to move Gates County forward with all this possible funding. And I will say this, when I was communicating with Howard Hunter this morning about the funding for the community center, this is what I said to him. I said, I asked for $250,000, because I didn't know what to tie it to, because you just can't ask for appropriation without a project. I said, but the next time I call you, it's going to be millions. Why? I saw in the paper all the money that's going to all the other counties and all the other entities. The next time I, the next time I talk to him about appropriation, or anybody about appropriation, it's going to be millions for Gates County. But I thanked him for what he did. I really did. But we're on it. This commission board is on it as far as moving us forward, and I thank them for their, thank the county manager for all the work, I mean, county attorney for what he has done and will continue to do. Sometimes I feel like a lawyer. And congratulations to Commissioner Owens and his daughter. He's in the paper. He bought all the papers, so if you can't find an index, Jack has every last one of them. His daughter is the new.
Assistant District Attorney.
Assistant District Attorney. Yes, she is. Ashby? No.
Allison.
Allison, Allison. I get the name wrong, but she's the new, I mean, that young lady just graduated from law school this summer, and now she's got an office and everything. So congratulations, Commissioner Owens, on your family's achievement. Now entertain a motion to go into closed session. According to NCGS 143, that's 318.1186 personnel.
Sir Moon.
We will not take action when we come out of our closed session, but we're now going into closed session.
Okay.[1423.83]
Okay.
I need a motion to come out of closed session.
I'll tell you, I believe that we come out of closed session.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Out of closed session. We are adjourned.